Good evening. Welcome to the continuing saga of Ninety-Four Knot Main Street. Board of Selectmen, oh yeah, Board of Selectmen. The zoning board of appeals. All personnel are present and accounted for. Okay, a couple of things.
Nate Orsiani is not here tonight, and Mr. Cronin will be sitting in for him.
Mr. Cronin's been here for all the meetings. He's been sitting in the, in the audience, so he's well adverse about what's going on. So, okay, so what happened was last Thursday, just to give everybody a little brief history. We decided, we continued this. There were some questions brought up about the water, magnesium, magnesium in the water and stuff. In case anybody's interested, over on the table, there's a letter from the Water Department. It gives you a whole explanation of what's, what's with the magnesium, okay? All right, so, the first thing is, is that on this past Monday, Mr. Burrell, Bob Burrell, the chairman of the Board of Health, and I met with Mike Coveney, who is the superintendent of the Water District here in West Boylston. And basically, we sat down to talk to him about, you know, the concerns that everybody has about, about the water and stuff. And basically, what he said to us was that, that the magnesium has been in the, it's been in the water for quite a while now. So, basically, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read this letter that he sent to us, okay? It says, "Members of the ZBA, the Oakdale area of town has experienced discolored water issues due to magnesium periodically for many years. These situations are multiplied whenever there is a water main break or heavy use of the water such as using a fire hydrant for a fire. Most of the magnesium in the water is coming from the Oakdale well. The Oakdale well is used for supplying about fifteen percent of the water for the town. The remainder of the water is supplied by the Pleasant Valley fifty percent and Lee Street Wells thirty-five percent. The magnesium in the water is not a new issue. It has been around for many years, and the Water District has been searching for a new source well for as long as I've been in this position, which is over ten years. We are currently in the process of testing a potential new source of water, and the initial results have been promising. I want to assure you that the water is safe to drink. Consumers should use this, their own judgment in using water that is discolored. The water may have metallic or bitter taste and not look pleasant at times. This is due to the oxidation of the magnesium particles which are now visible. Consumers should run their faucets until the water is clear before using it. The water coming from our wells is not filtered and contains all of the minerals that occur naturally in the groundwater. The only way to remove the magnesium from the water at the Oakdale well would be to build a filtration plant at the cost of approximately three to four million dollars. This cost would need to be financed by the rate payers and would result in significant water rate increases. The Board of Water Commissioners are aware of this issue and have directed me to keep searching for new sources of water as a more cost-effective means of solving this issue. You have received a spreadsheet with the results of the magnesium samples that we have taken over the last few years. There is a recent rise in the levels starting with the June sixth, two thousand sixteen samples. This is primarily due to the cleaning of the Oakdale well, which also occurred, occurred in June. Many times after well cleaning, there will be an increase in the mineral levels as a higher rate, as a higher rate of water is drawn out of the aquifer during the cleaning process and thereafter. This increase may take several months to return to normal. The samples taken in June were after the cleaning and also as the well was being pumped to discharge on the ground surface near the well and not out into the distribution system." See the below, and then it gives us all the readings. And according to this, which is the one that we're concerned with, is the Seventy-Six Knot Main, and the reading at that time in September, which was, they did it September thirteenth, Mr. Coveney said. The results came back at zero point zero two two. Most of magnesium people require is in their diet. Below are few sources, okay, and then he gives a list of some of the food sources that contain it. We have noted that magnesium issue in both the annual water quality report and the annual district report for many years. I have included the paragraph from our annual water quality report and several links below that I would like to share about magnesium. This is certainly not a new issue, and while some may feel that the discolored water situation has increased recently, most of that is due to the cleaning of the Oakdale well. Several major water breaks and the cleaning and flushing of new water mains. Magnesium is a naturally occurring mineral found in rocks, soil, and groundwater and surface water. Magnesium is necessary for proper nutrition and is part of a healthy diet, but you can have undesirable effects on certain sensitive populations at elevated concentrations. The United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, and Mass DEP have set an aesthetics-based secondary maximum containment level for magnesium at of fifty U G slash L, micrograms per liter, or fifty parts per billion in health, health adversary levels. In addition, Mass DEP's Office of Research and Standards has set a drinking water guideline to magnesium, which closely follows the EPA Public Health Advisory for magnesium. Drinking water may naturally have magnesium, and when concentrations are greater than fifty, the water may be discolored and taste bad. Over a lifetime, the EPA recommends that people drink water with magnesium levels less than three hundred, and over the short term, EPA recommends that people limit their consumption of water with levels over a thousand, primarily due to concerns about possible neurological effects. Children up to one year of age should not be given water with magnesium concentrations over three hundred, nor should formula for infants be made with the water that, water for longer than ten days. The ORSG differs from the EPA's Health Advisory because it depends. It expands the age group to which a lower magnesium concentration applies from children less than six months of age to children up to one year of age to address concerns about children's susceptibility to magnesium toxicity. See the EPA drinking water, and then it gives a couple of things over here, a couple of websites to go to, okay? Like I said, Mr. Burrell is here tonight from the Board of Health. He and I met with Mr. Coveney on Monday. As I just read, this has been a longstanding problem in the town, okay? This does nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with this project at Ninety-Four Knot Main Street, okay? So, anyways, so that's, that's the gist of that. We did receive the reports from Mr. Ali about magnesium. We received the reports from Mr. Boyce from the Architect for the Oakdale Rehabilitation Center. Is that correct? Okay. So, with that being said, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board. I'll just speak for myself. I don't see how this is of any concern for the ZBA. This is basically a Water District situation. So, it's, the project at Ninety-Four Knot Main Street is not affecting the water or the magnesium in the water, okay? Now, Mr. Ali, Mr. Harrison, you can come up here now. Anybody have any comments about magnesium? All right, good evening, gentlemen. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good, okay. So, we got the magnesium situation taken care of, okay? So, hopefully, we can do this in orderly fashion, okay? On the twenty-seventh of September of this year, the town administrator received a, an email from David Rockwell. He is the financing person for MHP. And he says that MHP will be ready to issue a final approval for Ali's Oakdale Forty-B project by late October. So, it looks like MHP is gonna approve the financial construction loan for Mr. Ali. So, with that in mind, I feel that we should, let's see if the board, would approve Mr. Ali's extension for his comprehensive permit till December third of two thousand sixteen, which is two months. That's, in my opinion, that's more than enough time. With the condition that nothing else will be done, there'll be no building permits or anything issued until the board actually physically sees something in writing from Mass Housing Partnership that shows that the construction, financial construction money, loan has been approved. Anybody have anything that they wanna say about it? Anybody on the board? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Can I clarify one thing? You said, you said sixty days on December third for the final approval?
Yeah.
Okay, we have to return with the final approval, not the building permit?
No, the final approval. In other words, MHP, we need to see something from MHP that says, "God bless you. You have your money," okay? So, anybody on the board?
I do like to say, I think, you know, this project is going on for many, many years. The developer as well as the applicant had an opportunity to get all the papers ready, to get all the permits. I don't think so this is the, our board's delay. So, that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Charlie, anything?
No.
Okay, Christine, anything? Dan?
No.
Okay, anybody? I'll hear a motion.
I motion to approve the permit for sixty, extension for sixty days.
Do I hear a second with the condition of the?
With second.
Okay, second, okay. Hearing a motion, hearing a second. All in favor of approving the comprehensive permit for sixty days, which is December third of two thousand sixteen, with the condition that the board receive a final approval from Mass Housing Partnership for the financial construction loan, say aye. Aye.
Aye, no.
No.
Aye.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, according to Town Council, it has to be at least four members that have to approve it, so it's been disapproved. So, I have no idea where you're gonna go from here.
Council of Appeals Committee.
Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Harrison, if you have a second?
Yeah.
I'd like to speak to you. Okay, the only other thing is, is that I just wanted to ask the board. We have a, a public hearing coming up on the twentieth of October, and I understand that two of our members are not gonna be present. I was wondering if, how, how people feel about doing it on the twenty-seventh?
Oh, because, and just another aside, I had gotten a call today from someone also that they would like to file something. And I said to him, well, I have to let them know tomorrow what the date of the next meeting is, like we, this is,
you busy?
This is for Century Drive.
Okay. If the, when would they have to file to get it on for the next, for the next agenda?
For the twentieth, I think.
I thought today was the last day.
Yeah, it would be too late for the twentieth, but not for the twenty-seventh. Otherwise, they,
Roger, you available the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Dan?
Hmm?
You are available for the twenty-seventh of October?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Well, we need to know as soon as, as soon as you can, okay? Charlie, you available for the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. All right, the only, the only thing we have to find out is from Nate, if he's gonna, if he can be available on the twenty-seventh.
I would just go for it. I would just put the date as a twenty-seventh.
So we're gonna go for the twen, we're gonna go for the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah? Okay. All right, there's no.
Is that too late? Oh, you want to add anything?
Put down there that, with the approval, final approval, condition with the final approval of any.
You guys were never quiet when I was doing this. It's not fair.
Okay.
I know all your addresses, I'm gonna drive by your house and yell.
Okay, not hearing any other atten, atten, I will. Motion for, to adjourn.
Motion.
No, 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 we have to get the signature.
Raj, should we get the signature?
Let's get the signature, okay. Read it if it is correct.
Mine's still now, so I'm not sure if it's that.
Is it?
And Raj. Okay, Toby, you got the vote, it's three to two.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.